All right, folks, I'm gonna go ahead and call this meeting of the Dunn County Board of Supervisors to order. We will begin as usual with Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And if the clerk will call the roll.
Supervisor Johnson, Supervisor Pat Breslin, Supervisor Headland, Supervisor Score, Supervisor Steen, Supervisor Zons, Supervisor Gary Bjork, Supervisor Willsey, Supervisor Quinn, Supervisor Rogers, Supervisor Whitzel, Supervisor Kneer, Supervisor Barrier, Supervisor Calabrese is excused, Supervisor Keeter, Supervisor Vogel, Supervisor Sean Breslin, Supervisor Vandermeulen.
I don't know.
Supervisor Robinson.
Also, I don't know.
Okay Supervisor Hagan, Supervisor Thomas.
Oh Supervisor Robinson is now online.
Okay, just kidding. Supervisor Thomas is here Supervisor Prochnow, Supervisor Gilbert.
Here.
It's online Supervisor Larry Bjork, Supervisor Bauer, Supervisor Lino, Supervisor Hartung, Chairman Cullum.
Here. Approval of the minutes, I would entertain a motion Supervisor Steen moves Supervisor Whitzel seconds. Any speaking to the minutes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, minutes are approved. Presentation of petitions, memorials, and other communications. Nothing?
None of those.
All right, we're gonna move on to public comment in a moment, which is typically you can come up and speak to up to three minutes. And then if there is no objection from the board, since I am fairly confident a large number of the people in this room are here for the item 11C, the ATV/UTV bill, I'm going to bump that up into the agenda to write after public comments. So those of you who are just here for that and would like to get out of here sooner can get your vote and get go get on the road. So is there any objection? Okay, 11C is gonna now essentially be 6B. All right, public comment. Yeah, we've got a list.
Sure, yep, Bob Cook. All right, you're up, buddy.
Come on up. And please state your name and address and then keep the comments to three minutes.
I'm Bob Cook, Chairman Town of Red Cedar. I reside at E6477 490th Avenue in Menominee. At this time, I'd like to thank the county board for the opportunity to speak on behalf of ATVs and UTVs which are out there and using our roads now in the towns. I believe that ATVs and UTVs, if they're following the speed limits, the drivers and the machines are properly licensed and stickered, have signal lights and brake lights, travel on the far right side of the road in single file. They present no more danger on the highway than slow-moving ag machinery poorly lit, slow making sudden turns, they're dodging mailboxes because they've got wide equipment. I'm gonna be replacing a sign tomorrow that a piece of farm equipment hit today. And which means there was no room on the road that was on there. ATVs and UTVs will not present any more danger than residents and pets walking in the morning, noon, and nighttime hours with no reflective material and walking side by side and walking with the traffic. ATVs will present no more danger than homeowners mowing the right-of-way toward the road, which is against the law, and blowing the grass onto the roadway, causing a slippery surface for motorcycles and automobiles, and the danger of rocks and sand flying at cars. Yet no one mentions that at all. And you've got motorcycles that are fast, hard to see, and making a lot of noise. I ask that you let the taxpayers use the road they're paying for with their licenses and their gas tax. And I'm asking that the county board comes up with an ordinance. We've nailed down a lot of it already as far as days of operation and originally it was 35 mile an hour speed limit. Now, the state originally had said posted speed limits. Well, that's something that the county has to decide. But I and the and the board of Town of Red Cedar do not feel that is a danger to the public with ATVs and UTVs. Last week, while sitting in my recliner, I watched four side-by-sides with four people each on a joyride go past my intersection. Yet my neighbors that use that same road don't stop for the stop sign. In fact, they're speeding up coming down the hill to the stop sign. So these riders are using common sense. There's only a small percentage that will be the problem, and we have that percentage right now with the automobiles. So at this time, I would urge the county to open up the roads to ATVs and UTVs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Eric Schultz.
Good evening. I as well would like to thank you guys for your time. My name is Eric Schultz. I live on 90th Street over by Downing, Wisconsin. As well, I am the president of the ATV Association for Dunn County. I'm here on behalf of all of our clubs that we have and our members. There's roughly 7,000 machines registered in Dunn County. And the amount of tax money that is generated by these machines and the amount of other monies generated throughout everything from repairs and the gas and everything is a good thing for Dunn County. I can't say a whole lot more. Bob hit it all on the head. He should be in my position instead of where I'm at. Like I said, there's we're all in support of it. We hope that the board can come to a good decision on this topic this evening and if there's any questions that I could ever answer, I'm free to ever answer. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next up is Dustin Shackleton.
Good evening, I'm Dustin Shackleton. Live at E5856 800th Avenue, Menominee, Wisconsin. I guess we've been working on this for a couple of years now. A lot of the townships are on board. We've seen very little issues with ATVs, UTVs on roads. We'd like to see more roads opened up so we can have more routes and not have such concentrated areas on certain routes, but be able to travel more roads. We've got a lot of the townships that are open, but are landlocked because of, say, Highway E spots where we can't get through. So like my family and I are not able to ride, there's not a good route for us to get down to Downsville. We'd like to be around a Downsville, make a loop because there's certain county roads that are impeding our access to get where we'd like to get and not I don't believe that there's gonna be a huge amount of traffic just traveling strictly on the county roads. I think it's mostly gonna be used for getting access to riding town roads and stuff like that, but it would just open up a lot more avenues for us to ride. And most of the people that I see or or ride with are people that ride responsible and with the ordinance was at the last meeting that they were talked about. Signals and stuff like that, sounds like it'll keep a lot of the issues that people are concerned about with young riders and people tearing stuff up. Having us have signal kits and stuff at night and stuff like that, I think will cut down on that if anyone's concerned about that. But I would just like to be able to see more areas that we can ride. A lot of us have a lot of money invested in these and we're responsible. So I would just urge the board to vote in favor of this if you would please. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next up is Darryl Comro.
Good evening. My name's Darryl Comro. I am currently a resident of Pepin County, but also a president of a local club down there called the Back Country UTV and ATV Club. We actually have two townships in Dunn County, which is Rock Creek and Peru. We have two townships in Eau Claire County, and we have four townships that we watch over in Pepin County. We appreciate your support. We really love getting the Caryville Bridge opened up last year or the year before to access people getting across. It's a major thing to get connecting routes between Pepin, Eau Claire, and Buffalo County. A lot of what they've said is true already between the buying gas and repairs and stuff comes into hotels, grocery stores, restaurants, the whole gauntlet of tourism. Our club also is involved with road cleanups, donations, helping with the parades, scholarships and stuff. So it would be easier also, obviously, for the police department to enforce if it is all the same and opened up. I appreciate your support and thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Jody Klinger and on deck would be Ronnie Smeltzer.
Hi, my name is Jody Klinger. I live at E1380 1260th Avenue in Boyceville. I am the secretary treasurer of the Boyceville Area Snowjammers. And we would just like to reach out to all of you in support of this ordinance. We've worked a very long time to try to get routes established in our county so we can eliminate some of the problem areas. If we open up more highways, we can get more routes, which will alleviate some of the high-traffic areas that some people do complain about. So if we can spread out the traffic, it would help a lot. We, as a club, have worked on this since 2008. We have seen you people a lot. And I feel like we wouldn't have to keep coming back here if you support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Rainey Smeltzer and then Bev Bernier.
Good evening, I'm Rainey Smeltzer. I reside at E6425 County Road D. David Colfax, Wisconsin. Many of you probably, I thank you for allowing this. You don't probably know me, but many of you probably knew my husband Randy Smeltzer, who sadly I lost in December. He was very passionate about working to get routes open. I know he spoke to several different township meetings. Maybe some of you is in some of those meetings or in some of the other committee meetings. I just would like to see this happen for him. CNT works so hard for this. And I just ask that you give us a chance to show that we are responsible individuals out there wanting to enjoy ourselves. I do think this would be nothing but a positive for Dunn County. And it would definitely benefit and help the sheriff's department in law enforcement being able to monitor things. So please, if you can give us a chance and put this through for us tonight. I would appreciate it as I know my husband would also. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey Bev's up and then Bob.
Hi, I'm Bev Bernier. I live on N11471 765th Street in Otter Creek. So I'm on the other side of the coin. We live in a very rural area. We're right off of a county highway. It is so peaceful, and that's why we moved there. We move there for the peace, the quiet, the serenity that you really can't find in a lot of places anymore. So because we value our peace and quiet, we're asking for consideration to not opening up county roads. There's a lot of places people can ride to. You can trailer your vehicles if you'd like to. Our children are avid ATV riders. They go to trails. Our one daughter lives in Menominee. She said she unfortunately is on a road adjacent, and she said, come live in our shoes for a couple of days. You'll see how noisy it is, especially if you value the peace and quiet. Now, we realize that we are minority. And if this is something that passes, we are requesting that the 24/7 at least be reviewed. During the middle of the night is when things happen. Last Saturday night, someone rode through our yard, tore it up, an ATV/UTV. And we're on a closed road. We are on one that is not open. And that's when things happen. So we're requesting if it is going to open that the hours are something like 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM. Because unfortunately, you know, there's a lot of good people that ride ATV/UTVs, but there's those few bad apples. And they're gonna come out in the middle of the night because how do you catch them? You call the sheriff, you put your cameras out, you try to catch them. What's the fine? What's the penalty? You know, and it's scary nowadays when there is so much stuff going on, middle of the night, you don't know what's going on. So again, at least some set hours. And the other question is too, responsibility for signing and paying for signs and replacing vandalized signs. I believe that falls on the municipality, so our town would have to invest money in those. And again, the policing. So again, our concern, again, with opening up the roads is how do we maintain our peace and quiet? How do we keep the ATVs off of the small roads like ours that are not open and they're not going to be open? And what's our recourse when they are coming on? Because right now they are. And our fear is it's gonna increase greatly once the county roads open. And we really, really want to maintain this peace and quiet. So I thank you for your time, and I do thank you for any consideration to either of our requests, whether it's not opening up more county roads or putting set timeframe on it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob's up and then we'll have Jeff Denoff.
Bob Bernier, N11471 765th Street, Colfax. Bought land in Otter Creek, started 40-some years ago. My dad hated it because I lived in Chapel County and I farmed. I farmed for a living. That's what I did, not just ride around, but a living. And what I'm concerned about, if you open up county roads, and I'm sure it's gonna probably open up, it's not gonna affect me as far as right personally, but what's gonna happen is they're already riding on my road. Why? Who's policing it? Nobody. Do I like our cops? I love our cops. I feel sorry for them. I really do. I talked to a guy the other day. We went around and checked some roads. A guy, Todd Sims, he's down off the back road from me, nice guy, plumbing. He likes he likes ATVs. That's great. We went up the road that his is open. The majority of those people on the average pretty much want it open. Hey, they want it open. That's fine. Our road was 100% closed. It's gonna stay closed. Who stops them from going on it? Nobody. They go on it now. Why? It's closed. Do these clubs and people, I respect clubs and that, but are they gonna stop these people from going on it? I had a good one here. One that 10 miles an hour over to Spielam is so much, 11 to 15, 16 to 19 over. Who in the hell's gonna police that? Luke? I don't think so. You ain't gonna sit out there at night and watch this? No. And I do I do I mind people getting from one area on a county road here and there? The people on the county road, they should have a right, I would think. But in the majority of Otter Creek, I'm on the board of the township. We respect, we got a huge hunting community. I could name guys like Brady Schiller and a pile. I'm going up the roads and talking to people and they're not opening the roads. The ones that are open, I'm pretty sure, because me and the next guy coming up, gentlemen, we went and checked with it and they want them open, fine. And that's because there's Woodland Park there and this and that. And hey, it's a business. I respect the business and I hope they have a really good business. I want that. But for our place and that, I don't know who's gonna police it. I really don't. And I appreciate everything you guys do try to do, but the world is getting a lot of bad apples. But thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jeff Denoff.
Hello, I'm Jeff Danoff in 10957 65th Street, Colfax. I'm up in Otter Creek up there also. As far as other counties and other county roads, I have nothing to say about any of that as far as I'm just concerned about N and S. First of all, I do have a four-wheeler. I've had a four-wheeler for years. I've rode trails. I love it. My main concern is, and my question to the board, would be I guess like like Bob was saying, if they were to stay on N and S to get through that they need to get through there to get to other roads, like he said, there are a couple of routes right now through. The people we talked to were saying that the majority of the ones I talked to, which I told them, come to this meeting, that's where you need to speak. And their response was, which I wish there was actually some law enforcement here tonight, a Dunn County sheriff, because their first response was gonna be, I'm just gonna call the sheriff. Well, they're busy enough. I mean, and by the time they would get there, I mean, when they come through past me, they're moving. They're moving good. I live on a dirt road and like Bev also, I love the quiet. I like a nice out there. I ain't trying to ruin any clubs' rides, anything like that. I rode bike for years. I used to go on big bunches, went for rides, so I know how it is fun to ride in bunches. But like I say, my question is, is why I don't understand on certain roads why you would open it up in a township that a lot of these township roads are not gonna be open. So I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I know that your clubs are passionate about it. I can respect that. I'm just talking about my little piece of heaven over there. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all we have for public comments of those in attendance. I will now read the public comments that have been submitted online. On January 2nd, 2023, the following letter was received. To whom it may concern, we are recently informed at the local Wisconsin Towns Association meeting of an upcoming change in Dunn County ATV/UTV routes to include a majority of county roads. This was shared to the group by Dustin Binder, Dunn County Highway Commissioner. We would like to voice our concern with opening up additional county roads to ATV/UTV use. Some of the undersigned live on town roads directly adjacent to County Road S that are not open to ATV use, and some of the undersigned live on county roads, including S, W, and others. Even though County Road S... Sorry, that was my timer. I'm cutting myself off, I know. Even though County Road S is not open to ATV use, we do see a number of ATVs travel on S and other county roads and gravel town roads we live on. We understand we have no concern with we understand and have no concern with neighbors using ATVs on the roads to get their respective tracts of land to check crops, livestock fences, etc., as referenced in Wisconsin statutes 23.33. These riders typically have slow-moving vehicle signs, but we do have concerns if the roads are formally open to ATV traffic. We truly enjoy the peace, tranquility, and safety of living in our township. This includes the freedoms to walk and bicycle county and township roads without the noise and disruption of ATV groups and individual riders. Many of these riders travel at a high rate of speed and enjoy traveling in larger group rides. When walking, we have been startled by the ATVs speeding by, and we run to the ditch to avoid the dust and rocks in their wake. Some of those who go off the approved routes have traveled onto ATV township roads enjoying quote fishtailing and quote and quote doing donuts and quote on gravel roads. We were informed by the ATV club to get the license number of offenders and contact the sheriff. Obtaining license numbers is nearly impossible. There are exceptions to this where ATV riders travel at 35 miles per hour or less and don't ride recklessly or tear up gravel roads. We are respectfully requesting that the consideration to be we are respectfully requesting that consideration be given to not opening up additional county roads to ATV traffic, specifically County Road S in the town of Otter Creek and the current closed portions of County Road W. We believe these roads have too much regular vehicle traffic to safety allows ATV traffic, and opening up the roads will lead to additional ATV traffic on town roads that are closed to ATVs, disrupting the peace, tranquility, and safety we truly enjoy. We doubt that residents or cities or other places where people reside would enjoy having ATVs racing through their peaceful neighborhoods. Thank you for any consideration given to their quest. Bradley Brady and Bethany Schindler, Jeff and Laurie Denoff, Gary and Denise Axon, Jim and Kathy Erwin, Dan Getz, Steve Getz, and Viegatz. So there's that. On Tuesday, April 11th, the following communication was received. To the Dunn, my name is Leanne Ralph. I serve as a supervisor two on the Otter Creek Town Board, and in a few days I will take the oath of office as town chair and writing as a resident of Dunn County in the town of Otter Creek. I have concerns about Dunn County opening all highway counties to ATV/UTV traffic. I have special concern about the county highways in northern Dunn County that are twisty, windy, hilly, with a road surface that is not particularly in great condition. I realize that the reason for my concern is not within the jurisdiction of Dunn County, the Highway Committee, or the Dunn County Board, but it seems to me that opening all county highways to ATV/UTV traffic is going to make the problem worse that they are already experiencing on town roads. County Highway N is about two miles north of where we live. Only some of our roads in Otter Creek are open to ATV/UTV traffic, and the road where I live on, I really gotta stop doing that to myself. Sorry. On some of our roads in Otter Creek are open to ATV traffic, and the road where I live on 970th Avenue is not open to ATV/UTV traffic. Even though the road is not open, that does not stop the ATVs from roaring past our place at all hours of the day, particular on weekends and as late as midnight or early in the morning, and especially during the spring, summer, or fall. Many times the drivers of ATVs we see go by our children, operating wide open with a 90-degree turn in the road coming up or downhill if they are going south and a sharp turn to the right after the hill where we live to turn up another quote blind and quote S-curve hill to the east or to turn south on a dirt road. Running up the middle of the road, no helmets, sometimes when it's kids, there are two or three children on the ATV. One time there were, I believe, four. No adult accompanying them, no adult supervision. Farm equipment and the neighbors' semi-trucks sometimes navigate the S-curve hill. The neighbors, the neighbor does not like to come home from time to time to see his wife. Though wide farm equipment takes up most of the road, I'm always concerned that the ATVs are going to be racing up the middle of the hill to meet a tractor and corn planter or tractor and haybine or tractor and baler or tractor and wagon or the semi. And nowhere for the ATV to go except straight up the bank into the woods on one side or straight over the bank down to the woods and pasture on the other side. I thought about grabbing my keys and hopping in my little truck and giving pursuit, except by the time I got the keys, the truck started to head out the driveway. The ATVs are past our place, and they're going so fast, I have no way of knowing which way they went. I wouldn't drive that fast anyway because there are turkeys and deer and other wildlife just waiting to spring out in front of you or our necks, in our neck of the woods. I realize this is not a problem Dunn County can solve. The kids I see riding would be in violation of the ordinance, but I would imagine the ordinance would only apply to the county highways. The ATV/UTVs are inherently noisy. The village of Colfax has an ATV/UTV ordinance that sets the speed limit at 10 miles an hour. They are still noisy, and that's when it is They are still noisy and that's when it is only one, not a whole line of them, allowing them to go up to thirty-five miles. Per hour or faster, if the speed limit is higher in a group will create quite a lot of noise. People tend to live in rural Dunn County because they cherish peace and quiet. The snowmobiles in the winter are equally noisy, but they are limited. By season and weather conditions. The ATV, UTVs are used year round. We are, we have an older couple drive past our house in a side by side from time to time. They go about ten miles an hour. Wave as they go by if we are outside. We wave back. As a resident, I have no problem with this. I have no problem with the ATV use for agricultural purposes. I sometimes hear the argument that people who live in cities and villages want to be able to drive on. Quote our and quote roads with their ATV, UTV, because those of us who live in rural. Areas drive on quote their and quote roads to go grocery shopping or to big box stores. The people who use this argument do not seem very well informed about how roads are funded. Very little roadwork, except for perhaps a residential street or city or a village. That has very little traffic, except for local residents are funded entirely by property tax levy, but instead. As are the town roads. The recipients of state transportation aid, especially for main thoroughfares, or perhaps even the recipients of some federal dollars. If you have any suggestions about what to do concerning the children operating ATVs with no helmets or adult supervision, I would appreciate it. If you have any suggestions on how to make it clear that not all roads and townships are open to ATV, UTV traffic, others than signs, regardless of what the county has approved, I would appreciate it. I know we cannot keep all people safe at all times. I know that public roads are open to the public, but I also know that property owners who buy property in rural areas and pay their taxes. And wish to enjoy peace and quiet on their own homes are entitled to that as well. Leanne Ralph. On Monday, May fifteenth, uh, the following communication was received. Dear Dunn County Board of Supervisors, I want to take, thank the Highway Committee for. Moving the revision of the ATV ordinance onto your, onto you for review and hopeful passage. Here are my concerns as a lifetime pa- tax paying and voting resident. I'm in favor of opening all county roads as was passed last fall by the Highway Committee and again this month in May. Here are my thoughts on this. And why many others in Dunn County are in support of the passage. We pay property tax on our land and gas tax for all terrain units. Also maintenance items that are purchased in Dunn County that benefit everyone in our beautiful township. The benefits, big and small. It benefits big and small businesses in Dunn County as well. We don't restrict travel hours for vehicles, motorcycles, traffic, et cetera, on what roads they can travel on. So we should have the freedom to do the same with our ATV, UTVs. I want to be able to tell our friends and fellow riders that the county is open for tourism and business. Yes, I can say you will see more traffic from the passage, but opening the county is more about freedom to ride. To a friend or relatives on county roads, X, Y, Z, and access for all county residents. I can support adding in a safety feature and penalties that some suggested, but that is if the whole county opens up except for part of B, as I mentioned last fall. I think opening the county and having extra safety features will also help. Law enforcement be able to knowingly be able to enforce a rider that may be in the wrong. I see Otter Creek's concerns and if they are saying young kids are out there riding, it's mostly likely the neighbor kids who maybe they should talk to directly. As far as accidents, most of them happen on private property and not on all, not on the trail or road system. We know you would. We know you will get the one nefarious rider who will act up, but they will be the same if it's a vehicle, cycle, et cetera. And we shouldn't punish the rest. I have a current road route going past my place and it's on a hill, so there's. More throttle noise. I can tell you that it's quite. Quiet compared to semis, tractors and motorcycles going by. I really hope you'll consider opening the county twenty-four seven because tax dollars are generated around the clock. Stanton Township resident of forty years. Sincerely taxpayer and concerned citizen. Thank you for your time. Sam Zern. On Monday, May fifteenth at nine thirty eight AM, the following was received. Hello, I'm Brad Carey, landowner and UTV enthusiast from Elk Mountain County. I would like to write today to share my support for opening all roads in the county to ATV, UTV use. Local clubs like Elk Mountain, the Muddy Creek Riders, Dunn on Four, Colfax Riding Hill ATV, UTV Clubs, et cetera. Are working very hard to educate the public and put up individual road signs, but ultimately is becoming confusing for motorists. On what is open and what is not. I fully support opening all roads for the legal. To be legal for ATV, UTV use. Other counties in the state have done this with great results. I'm have family members in Marathon County as an example, and they put thousands of miles on their UTVs each year. I'm also in favor. Of requiring headlights, taillights and turn signals slash hazard features, uh, flashers on machines being operated by public, on public roads. Thank you for your time and consideration. Thanks, Brad Carey. On Monday, May fifteenth at nine thirty eight AM, following was received. Good morning, I'm writing. To you hoping that you will support the proposed opening road routes in Dunn County. I have been an avid writer for many years and have been educating people on what is legal and not legal. There's a lot of confusion on the part of riders and law enforcement on getting routes, hours of operation, et cetera. I know that safety is a great concern for everyone. Personally, I feel that operating all counties and township roads will not make a huge influx of riders. And it will also allow law enforcement to be better patrol and enforce the laws. I hope that everyone will have an open mind about this, as many counties in the state have went to opening all roadways. I believe it is also a benefit for individuals to commute to their jobs and other way of transportation. To and from the workplace. If you have any questions, I would certainly like to talk about. More about this. Thank you for taking the time to read this. Regards Kurt Jacobs. On Monday, May fifteenth at nine thirty eight AM, the following communication was received. I am. I'm writing to voice. My support of opening county roads to all ATV, UTV traffic. I'm resident in rural Elk Mountain and I believe this would be a, a great benefit, not only to residents of Dunn County, but also those who wish to visit from neighboring counties. Allowing ATVs and UTVs to travel more freely across Dunn County will bring a positive financial impact. To businesses in our own backyard. My wife and I were out for a ride this evening and we wanted to get ice cream and wanted to go to the Ellsworth Creamery near exit forty-five. Unfortunately, the only way to get there was via County Road E to B. So we went back home. Two people's ice cream isn't huge, but I can't imagine. We are the only ones who had that thought tonight. There's also the ability to join. Into neighboring counties' trail systems. At this point. Most of the people I know that ride Chippewa County just head into Barron County and there are more opportunities that way. We are missing out on those people coming and spending time and money here. Thank you for taking. Thoughts into consideration. Matt Swenson. On Tuesday, May sixteenth, oh, Monday, May fifteenth at nine thirty-six PM, to whom it may concern. I think that's we are supportive of opening all roads to UTV traffic except for state roads. Please vote in favor of this proposal. Thank you for your support. Sincerely, Galen and Chris Holback. Wednesday, May seventeenth at five fifty-two AM. Uh, the following was received. Oh, please consider for approval the ATV routes proposed by the Dunn County ATV Association. ATV, UTV riding is very popular and has a large tourism draw. Opening the proposed routes will also help keep more dollars in Dunn County and folks won't have to go outside of Dunn County to ride. We appreciate your consideration of this initiative allowing families to enjoy ATV, UTV riding right here in Dunn County. Thank you Samantha. Ca, sorry. On Wednesday, May seventeenth at eight thirty AM, the following was received. On behalf of my wife and I, we ask you to support the proposed UTV routes for Dunn County. Marty Baumgaunder. I'm not saying everyone should be that brief, but. Just kidding. On Wednesday, May seventeenth at ten ten AM, the following was received. Dear Highway Committee and County Board of Directors. As a resident and landowner in Dunn County, Wisconsin, we believe opening all county roads to ATV, UTV use will benefit our community greatly and are in full support. Thank you for your consideration. Dwayne and Susan Kester, Eric and Colleen Pember, Matt and Teresa. And five minutes before this meeting started, the following was received. Dunn County Executive Committee, as my understanding that the topic of the UTV and ATV being allowed on all county roads is being considered. From the mayor's desk, I personally support this initiative. That being said, once the county endorses this. I would present the idea to the city council opening. The streets of Menominee. Another item that should be considered is the use of golf carts as well. Sincerely, Randy Connect. And on a different note, uh. On Monday, May fifteenth, the following communication was received, not about ATV, UTV, um, usage. Below is a public comment related to Heritage Hall Resolution on Wednesday's agenda. UW Stout appreciates the consideration by the Dunn County Board of Supervisors of the resolution and support of UW Stout's Heritage Hall renovation project. This. Project is Stout's lead capital project and has been. For more than fifteen years. It has also been ranked by the UW System Border Region as the number one building project in the Chippewa Valley. And the number three major academic building renovation project across the entire UW system. The building was constructed in nineteen seventy-three and is at risk of failure. As determined by the independent feasibility study conducted in twenty twenty. The renovation will renew and modernize instructional environments, optimize operational efficiency and provide state of the art workforce training and services to students, the community and employers. Currently Heritage Hall serves two thousand students and it. With the renovation, we'll increase service to four thousand students every year. In addition to serving Stout students, Heritage Hall also serves the community members through its clinicals. Clinical Services Center, Child and Family Study Center, and Stout via Vocational Rehabilitation Institute. The programs housed within Heritage Hall for, play a critical role in addressing forecasted workforce needs in the Wisconsin's hospitality and tourism. Mental health and wellness, childcare, education and manufacturing industries. As Wisconsin's only polytechnic university, having modern facilities to train our students in the latest technology is critical to fulfilling our distinct mission and attracting and retaining students. As well as faculty and staff to the area. The recruitment and retention of students, faculty and staff has a direct impact on the local economy. A twenty twenty-two economic impact study confirmed that UW Stout contributes three hundred and six point two million dollars annually in addition, an added income to the region. The Heritage Hall renovation project is critical to fulfilling the workforce priorities for the university, city, county and state and cannot be delayed any longer. The cast, cost of the project will increase by ten million dollars each year it is delayed due to inflation. Thank you again for your support of this impact. Oh, thank you for your support of this important project and continue to support of UW Stout. Respect, respectfully submitted Catherine Frank, Chancellor at Stout. That's the end of the public comments.
Alright. So we have, we're moving up item eleven C, consideration of reports, resolutions and ordinances coming to the county board from the standing committees. From the Highway Committee, the ATV, UTV Ordinance Amendment. This is the first reading. Um, I need a motion to put it on the floor and then a second. And then, okay.
What do you want to go with?
Sorry, brain seized up there for a second. Uh, Supervisor Bauer and Supervisor Zons. There were a lot of hands up. Okay. And now I believe, um. Supervisor Prokno had.
Yeah, I would like to move to suspend the rules of the board for the second reading.
Alright, we have a motion to suspend the rules for a second reading. Do I have a second for that? Supervisor Steen. This will require two thirds, so that would be. Roll call, I think, is the easiest way to do it. Or we can do. Any objection? Uh, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Could you explain what we're talking about here? We're, we're saying so that.
Oh, absolutely. So, under normal circumstances, uh, this ATV, UTV. Ordinance, we would have a first reading. Everyone would have the opportunity to go home, think about it. We would come back and we would vote on it. At the next meeting. A motion to suspend the rules would allow us to have our discussion of that motion and the vote tonight. So we have a motion on the floor to allow us to suspend the rules, to have the discussion. And vote tonight. Um, I'm gonna try a voice vote and if it's, if it's not obvious, then we will do a roll call vote for the motion to suspend the rules. Um, but first, is there any to speak, speaking to that motion? Uh, Supervisor Keneer.
Um, my question is, is, uh. Why are we, why? Will, why do you want the rules to be suspended to vote tonight? Uh, there's good reason perhaps, but it'd be nice if everybody knew it.
I believe Supervisor Prakna has his hand up.
Yeah, the reason is, this is, this was approved back in October. We were hoping to bring this. Back in January or February, so this was approved by. February, April. Unfortunately, it took longer to get the ordinance drafted and put back to the Highway Committee, so it's been taken six, eight months too long. So I would like to get it approved yet tonight.
Any further speaking to the motion to suspend the rules? Alright, seeing none, all in favor of the motion to suspend the rules?
Aye.
Any opposed? I think we've got a two thirds. That was three noes. If anyone, if anyone insists, we can certainly have a. Roll call. Okay, motion passes. Onto discussion of the ordinance. So, speaking to the. Ordinance. Supervisor Headland.
Uh, yeah, I have some concerns. Uh. In the ordinance, um. Under I. Which I, it says all operators under the age of eighteen. Uh, not in possession of a valid driver's license shall have a valid ATV, UTV. Safety certificate in their possession and be accompanied by a parent or a legal guardian. And my question is, is how are we gonna accompany a single seat ATV rider? We can't, I can't put my fourteen year old in a car. And ride beside him. And let them drive it. Yeah, we're gonna let them drive ATVs and eighty-five mile an hour UTVs.
Thank you Supervisor Headland. Supervisor Sean Reslin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I've been doing some studying on this over the last couple of days. And I have some concerns also. The. Uh, Marathon County was brought up. Marathon County does have a lot of their county roads open. But they are only open. Certain hours. They also. Looked at the insurance requirement. The state does not require insurance. So now we're putting more pressure and orders on the Sheriff's Department. For how, how is he going to enforce the insurance requirement when? Technically, the state doesn't require it. We're gonna require it. And then. I do have a concern over winter months on some of the county roads. There's not, you know, if we have another winter like we did this last year. Your roads are narrow enough with the snowbanks. How are we going to handle that? They can't get all the way over. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Sean Breslin. Supervisor Keter.
Uh, thank you. Um, I've read this a couple of times and I don't see anything in there. Um. Is, does this res, does this ordinance actually? All the highways or?
Is your mom outside?
Did you hear?
Uh, Super, Supervisor Keter, if you, if you could repeat that, that would be great.
Okay, I was just wondering. Um, does this resolution or ordinance? Open up all county roads? I haven't seen that in here. I, I've read it a couple of times and I haven't, where is it that we open up all county roads?
Nick, do you wanna field that?
I can. I had it open and I accidentally closed it just now, so I have to.
Well, Nick is working on that. Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Well, that leads, thank you, Mr. Chairman. That leads, uh, right to my question on opening all county roads. And, uh, if you listen to. The people that spoke here tonight. Uh, you certainly had a different opinion from people. That live in an Otter Creek, they want their peace and quiet and, uh. People that down at my end of the county are at Elk Mountain. Colfax or, you know, want to get to Downsville or. Cross the Red Cedar River and, uh. You know, it, it's just, it's just too broad a statement that you open up. Everything. Um. I have. You know. I'll tell you one thing. I have plenty of experiences and doing donuts and S things, you know, on dirt. And I can imagine it's even more fun on, on ice. Uh, thank goodness, there wasn't. The video recording when I was young to bring forth my experience. But, um. It just seems to be too broad a resolution to open up all the county roads and you've got to respect people that, uh. Have found their place. And, uh. Don't want it disturbed, but you also have to respect people that say, uh. I'm powder, part of this organization too, which we call Dunn County, and I'd like to get from point A to point B. Uh, I, I think winter is a problem. I think, uh, deer hunting time is a problem. Uh, if you're riding ATV during deer hunting, you have to, uh, wear orange clothing, uh, like if you were. Anything else in the woods or along the roads. Uh. Did we speak to, uh, uh. Rifles and handguns and whatever else you might want to carry along if you just happen to see a turkey or something you want to take a shot at. It's gotta be great fun. And I respect that, but I think it's too broad a resolution to say all of Dunn County. Can do this. Oh yeah, by the way. Ride down. Where I live in a couple of years. And you're gonna have twenty-five hundred acres of solar panels to ride around the, the. Fall City Prairie. And those peo- those solar panels won't be objecting at all to your activities. Thank you.
Nick, did you find the?
I did. It is, it's in section ten. Uh, so when I did the writing on this, uh, ten A. Um, creates a presumption that any county highways or it, it creates a condition where. Any county highways that are ATV trails must be. Must be listed. And then B says that except as in provided in sub eleven, all county highways are designated as ATV, UTV routes. And then B says that except as in provided in sub eleven, all county highways are designated as ATV, UTV routes. And then eleven. Is a negative list, I guess, if you want, if you would. So, County Highway B from State Highway twelve twenty-nine to State Highway forty. Would not be a designated ATV, UTV trail. So, operation on that road would be prohibited.
Does that satisfy your question Supervisor Keter?
Yes, that, I think that's pretty broad to open up all highways, frankly, in my opinion.
Supervisor Vogel.
Thank you. So, does this ordinance for the county roads, because it sounds like some of the town roads. Are closed. This doesn't override that, or does it?
No, it doesn't. That's correct. This is only for county highways.
County highways, and so state roads would stay closed. As well as town roads?
Yes.
Okay. But.
There, there are special procedures for state highways, but this does not incorporate any of that.
Well, the mayor's public comment made me a little nervous if it's gonna open up Menominee, the city, so. So that's another issue though. So they can, towns and cities can control their own.
Yes.
Decent. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that would be an argument to bring to city council in Menominee. I don't think you'd be alone in that either. Supervisor Mark Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd like to speak in support of opening it up and. I think that as, as a member of the highway committee, we worked really hard on this with. Both sides of, of the, so to speak fence, listening to reasons to and reasons not to and. As a group, we went through the ordinances as it's written. And took into consideration a lot of the questions that have been asked already, which are great questions about what's open, you know, like the. State highways and County B and those kinds of things, so, and then the safety factors and. As well as. Speaking and getting information from. Sheriff's Department on how, how they would be able to handle. Keeping track of things on their end, end of things as far as rules being followed, et cetera, so. Just wanted to. Say that and, you know, hope that. We get it taken care of and supported.
Thank you Supervisor Thomas. Supervisor Kinnear.
Thank you, and Supervisor Thomas, that was a good explanation of what you looked at and the things you did. I'm just curious about why Highway B was excluded from, anyone can answer that one.
I did it because Dustin told me that's what.
Supervisor Prokno, do you have anything more on that?
Yeah, you know, at the highway committee, we, we've been discussing this for a long time. Highway B is like the main artery through Dunn County. It has a. Road use, I think like forty-five hundred vehicles. A day or hour, whatever. It is the most busy road in the county, so we decided to exclude that one. Plus, it's going over the exit forty-five, which is a lot of semis turning and going over that pass, so we, we decided to close that. The reason why we're opening them all is, is. Instead of just little segments, it's, it's too hard to enforce if you just have segments open. As we discuss this every year, we spend all kinds of time. We discuss highway counts. If we're gonna close another segment, it's like based on what number. So we just felt Highway B was the only one that was high, and, and all the other roads are a lot lower as far as traffic counts. You know, like I said, we've had several townships that have been open for several years. I know Red Cedar's been open for several years. They're heavily populated and they haven't had any issues. Dunn County has the seventh most miles of highway roads in the whole state. We have one of the lowest populations on all those, of all the counties too, so. I just feel it's time to open them all up. You know, other counties have, Polk County has, I know the South Counties, Pepin and Pierce have. I deal, I work a lot in Polk County, they haven't had any issues whatsoever, and they just went with all roads open, a lot easier to enforce. And. That's why we're supporting it.
Thank you Supervisor Prokno. Supervisor Rogers.
I'd like to. Compliment the highway department, or highway committee on. Adding some of these safety precautions. A couple of months ago, some of the people in my district had brought concerns about, about this. This issue and most of their concerns resolved around safety. It seems that the highway committee did do a good job of dealing with safety. Some of the enforcement issues are, are outside the control of the. County. Or outside of the resolution, what roads they ride on is a little more than what we can, we can police. So, I guess that's, I'd say thanks for the highway department.
Thank you Supervisor Rogers.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think I probably also can support this, but, you know, I'd sure like to have. Somewhere in here that says, you know, this is going to be reviewed in two years, three years, or something like that, and. Again, you know, opening all the highways, all the township for, forever. Is, is there something in there that says it will be reviewed?
I don't believe there is currently, but if you wanted to off, offer that as an amendment, you certainly could.
Well, I would like to offer amendment in three years that we. Get a report from the sheriff's department. To report from the highway committee. And anybody else that might be relevant. Club, yep, the clubs and, and. What, what they have found. That works. And what they have found. Doesn't work.
We will, the clerk is, is writing this down for future reference. It, it is. I believe actually formally in our rules that amendments should be submitted in writing. So, you know, next time around. Whoever.
Supervisor Bjork, I, can I clarify? Move to amend the ordinance to include a review after three years?
Correct.
Can we just put a date on it as twenty twenty-six? Then?
Yeah, however he'd like it. I mean, this could be reviewed at the next highway committee meeting at the discretion of the highway committee.
This is just a requesting of, I think, a formal.
I'd like it to come to the board. I think it's, it's that important for people for. How they feel about it, that your county board isn't just going to pass something or not pass something and forget about it.
And, and so are you, are you looking for a, like a sunset provision in it if it's not? Extended or? Isn't that part of your thought, you know, what you're thinking? The, the, the reason I'm asking is, the clerk is going to have to take this down and we, and, and the. Members of the county board will need to be able to understand. What they're voting on. It's not, you know, it's not, it's no fun to try to figure that out the day after.
I have great confidence in the clerk.
Oh, Lord. So.
So if Supervisor Bjork would, would recap.
I think, if you, so what I think you want is a. The highway committee to do a review in three years, consulting the appropriate authorities, bring their findings to the board. For a reratification of the, or, or as, as a report.
You write books, I plow fields, you did a much better.
Okay, so.
Okay.
Highway committee will, will do a review in three years and bring their findings to the board.
Okay. I like it.
Okay. Now we need a second for that motion. Supervisor Johnson, seconds. Any further speaking to the amendment? Supervisor Rogers.
I hate to be a nitpick at this, but I really think this should be, he should write this up and. And have it so it's in writing. As it should be done.
Supervisor Steen.
Am I on here? No, no, I am. My understanding would be that we could revisit this anytime.
Absolutely.
Without this, without this, although I, I, I understand what Larry's saying and. And, and I agree with him, but I, I don't really think it's needed because we can revisit this whenever the board wants to revisit it. Am I correct in that assumption?
You're correct in your assumption, the board can revisit this at any point in time. That's probably. More germane to the discussion of the amendment once we have a second, because currently we. No, no, not at all. I just. Oh, no, wait, Brian, Brian, Brian seconded it. My apologies. So yes, you were completely in order. That was my error. Any further speaking to the amendment? Supervisory now.
Yes, I think. I'm in favor of the amendment, anytime that we have anything that is going to be. Protecting our children. In this county. And also the, the, the concerns that I have, especially in the written reports where. People have been noted that there are multiple small children riding the ATVs at high speed. And I think our children are our precious. Precious commodity. And I think the ability for the board to review. Conduct a review with input from the clubs, input, input from the sheriff department. And input, input from the community at large, I think is something that is good. And should be supported by the board. Thank you.
Further speaking to the amendment Supervisor Bauer.
I'd like to call for a vote.
Okay, call the question. We need to have, I'm just making sure that we have the language of the amendment. Solid.
Sure. So, here's what I've got. Supervisor Larry Bjork moved to amend the, the motion to include a review of ordinance twenty. Two, twenty twenty-three thirty-four, after three years with input from the highway committee. Seconded by Supervisor Johnson.
And presented to the board. So highway committing and presented to the board was the second part of that.
Supervisor Larry Bjork moved to amend the motion to include a review of ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-four after three years with input from the highway committee and presented to the board of supervisors. Seconded by Supervisor Johnson.
You good with that one?
Or, or after?
After three years. Well, it says review in three years.
Three years from the date of passage is probably the. That work for you?
Yes, sir.
Both of you, great. That assumes it passes. Okay. Now that we know what we are voting on, is everyone clear?
So just to be clear. We're both, we're, we're voting on the motion. To include a review of the ordinance twenty twenty-three thirty-four in three years with input from the highway committee and presented to the county board of supervisors. Seconded by Supervisor Johnson. We are only voting on this amendment to the motion.
Yeah, you haven't?
Could you email that to me right?
All right. So, all in favor of the amendment? Any opposed? Motion passes. Now back to the main motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Of the ordinance? Supervisor Hagan.
A couple of questions for clarification, for signage in four E and I think five B and five D as well. For. The language, when it talks about the roads, it keeps saying ATV, UTV routes, but then it also says opening the county roads. So for signage, I'm just trying to picture, does that mean that? All the roads are all gonna get an individual sign, or does this just assume that? All the roads are open and there doesn't necessarily need to be a designation of ATV, UTV routes.
Nick, you need to turn your mic on.
My understanding is that. If all or substantially all of the routes in the county are open. Then signs, signage has to be placed at the, at the. Boundary, the county line. For county roads that pass into. Into Dunn County. I would, I think. Highway B would have to be signed as being prohibited, but I don't, I, I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. The highway. Commissioners is, I wish you were here, because I know he knows the answer to that question. But I, but I think the signage requirements are less because you're not just having a selected. You know, segments of, of roadways to be signed. They're all open except for the one. Or they would be if this was passed.
No, thank you. Supervisor Steen.
Yes, I don't know how relevant it is, but in the village of Colfax, we have a sign on all four entrances that. All roads are open unless marked. So I think that would. In, in Dunn County, if you had a sign up to entrance to the county, that would cover it, I think.
Supervisor Headland.
I, yeah, I, I guess, do we need to then place a sign? Where a, for instance, a town road is closed? When some town roads are open?
No, the townships. The towns would do that. They, they would be. Responsible for making whatever arrangements. I think currently the ATV clubs are responsible for buying the signage. I think they put them up with the direction or assistance of the highway department staff. But. The signs are purchased. But we would only be dealing with the county, county highways that are designated as. ATV routes, town roads, city streets. Would be subject to whatever decision their respective governing bodies would make.
Supervisor Barrier.
I think this may have been addressed already, but, so a lot of people brought up concerns about specific county roads in Attar Creek. So would Attar Creek have the authority to keep those closed? They would not.
Not the county.
Not the county roads.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Supervisor Hagan.
As a follow-up on that, is there any? I don't say recourse, but is there any way a municipality could? Come to the board if they feel like in less than three years, if a certain section going into their municipality. They want closed, is there? Anything for them to do in that regards or no?
They'd certainly be able to give Dustin a call, talk to the highway committee, and I'm very confident that the highway committee would be open to having that conversation.
Yeah, thank you.
Any further discussion? Supervisor Wilson.
Just asking for a roll call vote.
Certainly. Any further discussion after that? All right, we will have a roll call vote.
All right, the vote is open on your. Microphones, feel free to tap the screen and then vote accordingly. For those joining online, Supervisor Gilbert.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilbert votes yes. Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Robinson votes yes. That's more than. Oh, there's, sorry.
Could you announce the numerical?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep. So all supervisors have voted. There are twenty guesses, one abstention and five noes.
So the motion passes. So the motion passes. Motion has passed. All right, so.
If you send me that ammendatory language, I'll try to.
I'll email it to you.
Yeah, we'll get the, um, we'll get the.
Try to get it to you before the meeting.
amended version set. So that concludes our business on the ATV, UTV routes. You are all very welcome to stay and listen to the rest of our, um, extended dialogue, but if you would like to make a break for it, now is your chance. Back to my agenda.
Appointments.
Yeah, thank you.
There are none.
All right, so I'm gonna let the pail of the crowd get out of the room, but. Okay, folks, I'm going to, um, get us rolling back into our, uh, order of business now. Um, item seven would be appointments. We have none tonight. We move on to item eight, which is the report of the county manager. Take it away, Chris.
All right, um, purchase orders over forty thousand dollars. I believe there was just one in this year's, this year's, this month's packet from the highway department for herbicides. Any questions about that? Okay, um, I want to do a quick review. Um, and probably we'll do this of each, in each of the meetings going forward, just because we tend to, all of us tend to retain about twenty percent of what we hear, so I figure it can't hurt to repeat it. I just want to quickly run through the budget calendar. It's not every item, but the departments will receive their budget instructions on Monday. Uh, we will request that their budget, first round of budget submissions be submitted by July seventh. Uh, we'll take then, um, the month of August, we'll compile those, and then in the month of August, those, uh, budget requests from the departments will go to the standing committees for approval. On August thirtieth at five thirty, we will have a budget workshop for the county board. It's a Wednesday evening. And we'll shoot to try to get two in and out of here in under four hours, hopefully under three hours. Um, so it will be a little bit different timeframe than you're used to. Uh, and then we just, uh, Biata and I just discussed this today between, okay, so then the executive committee will meet for their first round of deliberations on the budget, um, first round of budget on September thirteenth. Between August thirtieth and October eleventh, which is the second executive committee meeting, Biata and I will set up a schedule that would invite you to come in in groups of two to four supervisors to ask questions, review just the things that you might not be comfortable asking in a larger group, or things you've always wondered about. Um, we will give you an opportunity, we'll set some timeframes, provide those, um, at the workshop and, and after for that matter, but, um, invite you to come in and spend some time one-on-one or in a small group to just, uh, do a deeper dive into the budget. And then, um, ultimately, our goal would be to have a, um, finalized version by the county board meeting in October, because the day after that meeting, the, um, budget needs to go to publication, and then you would do your final approval in November. So, any questions about that? So along those same lines, um, in an effort to, as we move into that and, um, as, as example in tonight's, as the example of tonight's meeting, um, oftentimes there are, there is not unanimous agreement on the direction that something should go. And so, um, I've asked, I'm gonna share my time a little bit, asked to, um, Corporation Council, Nick Lang, to spend some time with you talking about motions and amendments, so that um, the goal would be that we have a seamless process, not necessarily non-contested, but a seamless process that we don't bring things to a stop, um, but we, that you know the proper procedure for changing something if you don't like the way that it's looking.
Uh, Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm also on the town board of the town of Colfax, and we, we received some email from Assemblyman Clint Moses that he introduced legislation for increased state aid or shared revenue. And I'm not sure your one email sounded like you're just gonna introduce it, the other one sounded like it's already passed. But for a town of Colfax, that is going to go up two hundred and ninety-seven percent. So my question is, either if he's done it or not, is the county looking at any more resources coming from the state because of this new legislation?
Yes, if you're follow, if you follow now, um, any of the, the news related to the state biennial budget processing, that is, um, what they are currently working through with both, uh, the assembly and the senate uh, around what that new shared revenue formula will look like. So it is not passed, um, but it is being currently negotiated between the governor and the, uh, Republican Party.
Heard anything at all?
Well, when it, uh, one version had us at about between three and four hundred thousand dollars of additional shared revenue. Um, today's news was that it might be a little bit higher than that, but it's kind of moved all over the page, so.
Yeah, I think one early version would have been like one point two million, but that one went by the board pretty quickly, so it's, it's very much an open question. All right, and while Nick is gonna do that, I'm gonna sneak off and grab a cookie.
All right, good evening. I was asked to just give a little parliamentary lesson, I guess, on motions to amend. Um, so you've been, this, this board, we get a lot of new members last, uh, a year ago in the election. And you've seen the process of making a motion. The principle behind that is, um, you know, you have to have at least two people in the room who are interested in talking about this thing, so that's the person who moves, and then the second. If only one person is interested in talking about something, you just, you leave it and move on to the next item. So, uh, motions to being, to bring resolutions or ordinances or other acts, actions, uh, come up. Um, and as you've participated in this evening, a motion to amend, uh, came up. That's, a motion to amend is something that you want to bring up when you feel that you would like to change some of the wording and what's being discussed. You want to add words, you want to delete words, you want to change words, which is really just deleting some words and adding others. Um, and as you saw, it was pretty textbook. Um, Supervisor Larry Bjork, I moved to, uh, amend the motion by adding some language. Um, which I couldn't recite right now. But you specify what, you know, what, what it is you want to add, you want to, you want, which words you want to add, which words you want to delete, where they are, uh, is, is, as much as you possibly can. And then the board rules require that motions to amend be written out. I can always provide assistance uh, in that. I know I've provided, uh, Supervisor Rogers a couple of years ago with a motion, um, to amend an ordinance regarding some fees, I think, from the sheriff for the courts. Uh, I've assisted Supervisor Hadlin. There's, you know, if you, if you approach me or send me an email, um, give me a little lead time is always appreciated. Um, but if you, if you tell me what it is that you want to say, I can help you, uh, craft language that, that captures what it is you want to do. And so I, I handed out, um, I put one of these at everybody's seat. This is a, the, it's two kind of documents. The first one is the one I wrote, and I, I generally, I write this for myself. Um, and if something comes up, um, then I, then I might use it, um, as an example uh, for a supervisor who has a question, but since I'm speaking you, to you this evening, uh, I just decided to hand it out. And, and you can read it. The second, uh, the second thing is a, an article uh, from the April two thousand fifteen Wisconsin Counties Magazine. Um, the parliamentarian and chief of staff of the Wisconsin Counties Association, he's now retired. Um, but he used to write these interesting articles, and they were in almost every issue called Call to Order. I have, I have, um, extracted every one of those articles, and I have permission from the Wisconsin Counties Association to use them at any time uh, for education training of the county board. So if you have questions about a particular kind of motion, or you'd like copies of these things, just let me know and I'll send them to you. Um, going through it. Yeah, um, you make a motion to amend, and again, you have the details, what you're adding, what you're subtracting, which, which words. Um, you, uh, delivering a written amendment to the clerk, um, is there a second? Yes, I second. Um, so there's been a motion in the second to add language, subtract language, the chair will say this. And then you discuss the amendment and vote on the amendment, and then you come back to the original motion and, and vote on that either as amended, or if the motion to amend fails, then you, then you don't, you know, then you just have the original motion that, that came up and, uh, to begin with. I have on the back of the, or on the second page, uh, the reduced to writing requirement, I've got some information in there about it. Um, and again, you can, you can ask me for help, uh, you can, the county board chair is always a good resource to talk to. In fact, it's, I think it's a good idea to talk to the county board chair and let them know that you would like, or you're thinking about making a motion, just so they, you know, we can take steps to facilitate that easier. Um, or in, or the county clerk even, um, like what we were doing this evening, Andrew was typing, so technically it meets the requirement of a writing. Um, sometimes we've had them scribbled on a piece of paper, half a sheet of paper, and brought up, um. I try to, if I get involved with it, I try to write a, write what it is that you'd like to say with your approval, and I'll give a copy of it to the board chair, to the clerk, the county manager, to you, and I'll keep one. So if any questions come up, we have lots of people ready to try and help, try to answer them. But in, in the bottom of the second page, I have, these are examples of, of, I don't know, scripts, if you will, that I've actually, uh, prepared for supervisors, um, to, to help them achieve the motion to amend that they think they would like to make. Um, there's, there are two examples there, and I could probably find a few more. Um, but a motion to amend is important if you, if you want to change what's the action that's happening without um, defeating it. So you'd like it to happen, but not ex, not just quite in that, in that way. Uh, an example would be, um, like the tax levy. There were a number of supervisors who voted no on the tax levy last fall. That was actually a vote to have absolutely no property taxes in the county. A motion to amend to decrease the levy by five percent, or to decrease the levy to what it was in the previous year, or one percent or something like that. That would help you achieve your goal of being conscientious about, um, fiscal matters without, without defeating the action itself. So you, you, you shape it, you change it a little bit to try to accomplish what you think is an important objective in the action. And so, uh, it's important, um, for, in a lot of situations, to consider a motion to amend rather than just voting against it, although you can vote against it, you can vote however you wish, of course. Um, I don't know. Uh, I always talk too long, so.
Can I ask a question, Nick?
Sure.
So sometimes, um, it's clear what the action will be that's going to be requested in the, um, meeting um, packet. Sometimes, um, the amount, the motion actually changes a little bit in language or whatever. If someone were to want to offer an amendment, didn't have it previously written, would it be appropriate to ask for a recess while that language was drafted?
Yes. Yes, it would. You would, you would say, you know, Mr. Chair, um, I would request that we go into a short recess so that I can prepare written, um, memorialization of my, or you wouldn't have to say that, but I could prepare a writing of the motion that I'd like to make. Uh, I've got a pen and paper here, I just need a couple of minutes to write it down. Uh, my approach?
I have a bit of information that may be or sent out previously by
Yeah, I, uh, yeah, uh, yes. I don't have this, but, uh, it's based on the current, uh, volume of Robert's Rules of Order. So there would be nothing to, that we'd need to fix in there. I, I can, I can, you can. Could ask the Wisconsin Counties Association if they have more of them, too.
Yeah, that too.
Um, are there any questions?
Does not look like it.
Okay. I hope that was helpful.
Thank you, Nick.
All right, just want to draw your attention one more, uh, for one thirty, thirty more seconds. Um, we did post this out on social media. I wanted you to, um, see it as well. I thought it was a little bit different way of kind of conceptualizing where our tax levy or our property tax money goes. Um, at least the county's portion of that. Um, I don't know that there's, it's, you're certainly welcome to ask questions. I just wanted to draw your attention to the fact that this is the type, some of the type of the information that we're trying to push out um, to the public to just have a better understanding of how our local government works. Any questions?
Uh, Supervisor Patrick Preslon.
Uh, excellent job, very good. One quick question, though. Um, you go online, the median price of a house in Dunn County fluctuates from three hundred and thirty thousand down to two hundred and ninety thousand, nowhere near that one fifty. How did that get used as a thing? Because that would increase that yearly tax up to about eighteen hundred.
It would, and I think, I think it's a number, some counties use a hundred thousand dollars just because it's easily multi-liable. I thought, I mean, we just picked a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I think the idea being that, yes, if you knew that your value of your property was three hundred thousand dollars, you would double it. Perhaps that's an assumption made in that, but, um, uh, the other point about it would be that if you put it high, and people don't recognize that that's on three hundred thousand dollars, then you've alarmed people sort of in the other direction. So I don't know, I, we're open to however. It was just a random number.
Thank you, Supervisor Preslon. All right, um, on to item nine, reports of departments, child support. Thank you for your patience.
Hello, uh, my name is Josie La Liberty. I'm child support director here in Dunn County. Uh, I'm coming up on my three-year anniversary in August, um, but I have worked in the field of child support, uh, for nineteen years. My written report was in your packet, um, and I do have a short, uh, under three-minute video to show you, um, which is available on, um, the Dunn County Child Support website. Um, but it was put together by the Federal Office of Child Support Enforcement to explain what the Child Support Department is and, and what we do.
Stand that you may have questions about the child support program. What is it and how does it work? Basically, child support is payments that one parent makes to either the child's other Basically, child support is payments that one parent makes to either the child's other parent or legal guardian to help with the costs of raising a child. Parents and guardians can receive services from their local child support office. Here are the top services the program offers. Open a child support case. Locate the other parent. Establish parentage. Establish a support order. Set up payment. Enforce the support order and review the order. To open a child support case, you'll need to complete an application with your local child support office. And if you receive help from the Temporary Assistance for Needy Families Program, also referred to as TANF. Check with your local child support office to see if a child support case is already open. The first thing we need to know is where the other parent lives or works. There's no guarantee we'll find the other parent, but the more information you provide, like the other parent's date of birth and social security number, the easier it'll be. After we find the parent, then we can establish parentage if it hasn't already been established. Next, we can establish the child support order and determine the amount of payment. We use child support guidelines to calculate how much a parent should contribute to the child's financial support. If you already have a child support order, we don't need to establish a new one. The most common way we set up payment is to deduct the payment from the parent's paycheck. And distribute the money to the other parent or guardian. It's an easy way to make and keep a record of child support payments. When the parent doesn't pay the full amount or doesn't pay at all, we use enforcement remedies like. Withholding child support from paychecks, unemployment, or workers' compensation benefits. Intercepting income tax refunds. And reporting delinquent child support payments to credit reporting bureaus. Either parent can ask their local child support office to review their child support order three years after the order is set. They can also request a review before the three years if they experience substantial changes in circumstances. Like job loss or incarceration. We hope this answered some of your questions about child support. To learn more, contact your state or tribal child support office. Produced by the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services at taxpayer expense.
Now with, uh, permission from Chair McCullough, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any of you might have.
Uh, Supervisor Larry Bjork.
You're welcome.
Keep mentioning that because I think it's really important to see. Who works for Dunn County. Uh, and then the other thing I'd like to know is. How are we doing on? Collecting as far as one year to the next, I mean, are, are, are we having greater success now than we did five years ago? Or to the, how did the COVID? Uh, thing affect collections? And then thirdly. Do you do the? Program? Or send up the program that extension does where it's parenting for life, whatever it is, parents for life?
Do anything with the parenting for life, um. So my office, we do not take a position one way or the other on what, um, legal custody or physical placement arrangements should be. Um, we will calculate any financial obligations based on those other agreements. Um, so most often, um, the court will refer. Our case participants to tri mediation, which is out of Eau Claire, um, to try to reach parenting agreements as it relates to those things.
And are we, are? Are more people paying up or not paying up?
Um, so if you have my report in front of you on page six, there's a nice little chart. Yep, and I have, um, the last five years. Reflected there and overall, we're pretty stable. Um, we're kind of on a little bit of a downtick right now. Um, but the COVID year, surprisingly, we did really well with collections and, um, that was because. That first round of stimulus money, um, kind of went through on a federal level very quickly and, um. I don't think they thought about the whole, um, federal tax intercept program. And so a lot of those monies. Those stimulus monies were interceptable in the first round, um, and it paid off a lot of. Arrears or debt, um, and then. Uh, people were unhappy about that. So the second and third stimulus checks, uh, were not interceptable for the arrears.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Chair, so what age does the other parent get out of, uh, paying support? Is it eighteen or is it college or is it very?
So there's kind of a, uh. Those are two separate things. Um, the obligation to pay child support will continue in Wisconsin until a child, the youngest child on a case turns eighteen. Graduates high school or turns nineteen, whichever occurs first. Um, but just because the monthly reoccurring financial obligation has ended due to legal emancipation. Any of the arrearsages that exist, we will continue to collect until the youngest child turns thirty-nine.
Any further questions? Uh, Supervisor Hagan.
I have more of a comment, um, without getting into, um, too much detail. I had a constituent last year. Come to me about some questions about the payment process system because the way that theirs was set up, there was a, a. Um, either a technical, technological glitch or some gap that wasn't happening and they were worried about being considered. Uh, past due or not getting all the payments in time and everything like that. And. I believe I called your office and you guys were able to help the person out like just fine without having to get any, um. Obligations sent their way. So I just want to say thank you so much for helping out with that one.
Um, I would point out that, um, because the child support program is a federal program. That's administered by the states, our funding is a little bit different. Um, so. All of our allowable expenditures gets submitted every month and then is reimbursed to us, um, at a sixty-six percent match from the federal government. Um, and so we have, um, they're called cooperative agreements, um. With, we have three of them, co, um, Corporation Council's office, the Family Court Commissioner and the Clerk of Courts. So as staff in those departments assist my office in doing our work. We can submit the non-CSA staff's time for federal reimbursement. Um, and so I have those listed. What page is that on? So if you look at the top of page five, um, the Child Support Agency. Uh, as a department was on the county levy last year for forty-nine thousand seven hundred and eighty-one dollars. But I was able to recoup sixty-four thousand two hundred and twelve dollars for our cooperative agencies. Um, so we actually made money. I can't promise that'll happen every year. Um, so don't get your hopes out, but last year it worked out that way.
Any, uh, Supervisor Patrick Presland.
One quick question, uh, with child support, you've got a lot of people that don't want to be found. So you end up with quite a bit of administrative cost of your staff trying to nail these people down. Is there any? Refund or any way of getting any of that money back? Yes, sir. Supposed to pay the child support, but what about all of the efforts of the county that's put forth?
That's just our job.
Yeah, so it get, goes on to the taxpayer when it's actually the, all right, got you.
Yeah, so I, I would guess, um. Roughly eighty percent of child support payers. Comply with their orders and pay month to month. It's the twenty percent that are, um, more difficult. Um, and we, we generally try to meet those people where they're at and, um, try to. Be their ally, not their adversary and hopefully. Put them in, uh, contact with other resources within our community to get them to a point where they can be successful. Um, you know, I think child support gets a. A bad rap, um, as an enforcement agency, and I think perhaps twenty-five years ago it was, um, but that's. That's not the perception we want to have any, any longer.
And after our brief Three Stooges interlude. Uh, do we have any further questions for Josie? I don't see any. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Courts, uh. Come on up.
I can introduce myself while we're waiting. My name is Katie Shally. I'm the Clerk of Court here in Dunn County. Um, our written report was attached in the county board packet for the meeting this evening. I'm just going to present a brief little PowerPoint presentation that talks a little bit about the courts in Dunn County and the Clerk of Courts office. I have with me tonight Judge James Peterson, our Branch One Circuit Court Judge, and our Branch Two Circuit Court, Court Judge Christina Meyer. And. Start this from the beginning.
Well, there we go.
Perfect. Okay, so the circuit courts in Dunn County are comprised of the Clerk of Courts Office and the Judge's Office. We have three circuit court branches in Dunn County. Um, Judge Peterson, as I mentioned, Judge Meyer and Judge Wagner, who's unable to make it here tonight. Each of them have a full-time judicial assistant that work closely with them. That is a county employee and each of them have a full-time state court reporter that takes the record for all of their hearings. We also have a part-time family court commissioner and circuit court commissioner, Attorney David Showenberger. He's employed through Baki Norman, but is also. A contractual employee through the county. He processes and handles the. Family paternity and small claims actions in Dunn County. The Clerk of Courts Office, we have twelve full-time staff members, one part-time deputy clerk. And then three jury bailiffs that are part-time. They come in as needed when we have jury trials that take place to take care of the jurors. The Clerk of Courts Office is statutorily mandated to create and maintain all court records for all court case types that are filed in Dunn County. On average, we have about eleven thousand five hundred court cases filed, so between. Adoption, civil, small claims, family, paternity, criminal, traffic. Um, juvenile guardianship cases, probate and wills that all get filed before the circuit courts. We have staff process all of those case types and clerk all of the hearings. We did have a fourteen percent increase of case filings from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two, so we're getting our numbers back up there post-COVID. We're also responsible for recording all liens and monetary judgments. We main, manage all, um. Manage and provide access to all the court records. So if anybody wants to come into our office to review a court record. That's not confidential or sealed, you may be able to have access to that. We provide those as requested. And then we're also responsible for collecting all fees, fines and forfeitures that are ordered by the circuit courts. Clerk of Courts Office, we manage all the court finances, um. Having a little technical difficulty. It's okay, I can keep talking, but let's not. Um, so all of the court finances, we collected over three million dollars in twenty twenty-two. So the funds that get collected are routed between the Clerk of Courts Office. And then are directed onto state agencies, um, pursuant to those statutes. And I, I had a nice little chart here about our collection agency summary between twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-two. We partnered with the Wisconsin Department of Revenue. They're our state debt collection agency. They've collected over two point two million dollars for us. Um, we give the money each month and then we distribute out to the agencies that it's required to go to. Our prior collection agency, HE Stark, that we use from two thousand eleven to two thousand and eighteen. We only collected three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. So our partnership with the Department of Revenue in the state of Wisconsin is paying off. People are making payments to us. And dues are being, the debts are being paid. Um, we're also responsible for manning the, managing the juries. So in order to be a juror in the state of Wisconsin, you need to be eighteen years of age, a U.S. citizen, a resident of Dunn County. You must understand the English language and have all your rights restored if you are a convicted felon. On average, we have about twelve to fifteen jury trials per year in Dunn County. In twenty twenty-two, we had sixteen trials that started. Um, two of them actually sixteen that went, or fourteen that went, two did not start due to individuals not showing up for the jury trial date. Here was a chart I was going to show about our collection summary. Um, just kind of showing, um, we're doing really, really well with the Department of Revenue. Juries, um, another big thing in twenty twenty-two is we had a lot of interpreters used. There was over two hundred and three court hearings where we needed an interpreter for. Um, there was fifteen different languages. Um, the two top languages being Hmong and Spanish in Dunn County, but there's a lot of different languages that we've not heard. Or, or used previously. So I, this was something I wanted to point out. It's also the most money we've ever spent on interpreters.
Just a moment, uh, Supervisor Steen, did you have a question?
Uh, yes, Kay, uh, in regarding to this, how many of those people, uh, if any, were illegal aliens?
I don't know the exact answer to that.
Okay, you don't.
We don't, I, we don't, I don't track that, don't.
Thank you.
Yes. Um, another thing that we provide in Dunn County is truancy court, and I'm actually going to let Judge Meyer talk a little bit about the truancy court process in Dunn County. And there that is.
So I don't know how much time you want me to spend on truancy court, um. In. Truancy court was started by Judge Stewart and Judge Smeltzer, years ago, I think nineteen ninety-nine, if I remember correctly. And we've been doing it ever since. What I stated people is. This, all of this, the statutory, this little box right here is truancy court. That's us. The rest of it is, um. All by statute. So at the beginning of, or last year, last year, um, it used to be that the truancy court was divided up between the three courts. Um, it was Judge Smelter's idea, he told me before I was elected. That, um, he thought it would be a good idea to have one judge, one truancy court. And so at the beginning of, I think last year, we moved truancy, all truancy to my court. And so truancy court is about, um, children who are. Missing a significant amount of days from school, but that. We don't think that they're. High enough need that they need to have a, a social worker. Work with them all of the time. And so they have a need, just not a high enough need to have a social worker all the time, which would be, by the way. This box, juvenile court. And so they come to my court and we do truancy twice a month. Mostly I nag them about going to school. I do punish them sometimes, um, I. I put an ankle, I order them to have an ankle bracelet. I order them to, um. Pay a forfeiture. Um, I have the authority to yank their driver's license for a year, yank their hunting and fishing license. Sometimes I read to them over and over again, you know? If they won't go to school, I read to them, oh, by the way, did you forget these things that I could do to punish you? Um, and maybe that'll help them go to school. Mostly ankle bracelets. I'm pretty proud of our truancy program. Uh, we have had success with getting kids to go to school, not all of them. If they don't do well in our program, then they move to the juvenile court petition filed and then they have a social worker that works with them all the time. We encourage them. Our goal is to say, uh, go to school. And when they go to school, then we say, look how wonderful you are. We knew you could do it. We always knew you were smart and we're very proud of you. I don't know if anybody has any questions.
Uh, Supervisor Steen.
Yes, uh, on the, uh, I, I would take it to be rare occasions that you'd have some forfeitures. Uh, are you able to collect them from underage kids?
No.
Okay, uh, my second question is, can you, let's say that you find a kid and he ain't going to pay it. Can you get it from the parent?
We can collect from the parent under, under. So the ordinance refers to the statute and then it's statutory. We could collect from the parents. I rarely order forfeitures. I would rather order an ankle monitor. Community service. I have yanked kids licenses. That gets their attention if they can drive. It does. If I order them, if they have a job, then I might order them to pay a forfeiture. But then I give the parent a lecture about how I don't expect them to pay. I expect the kid to pay, not the parent. Because I don't think the parent is the one that's creating the issue with the child going to school.
I worked in a school system for 22 years and my experience was that it doesn't take a kid long to figure out that he doesn't have to pay it.
Exactly.
And so I'm wondering where the, I guess my thought would be make it painful for the parent and then pretty soon the kid will straighten out. But that's only my thought.
Sometimes, I mean, if we're going to talk about collecting forfeitures, then we want to talk to Ms. Katie Shally over here. Sometimes, some of these parents are at wit's end. They, they don't know what to do. They, some of them are angry at me for, because I am saying their child is truant and we're going to punish them or encourage them, or we expect them to go to school. But most parents are just at wit's end. They, they don't know what to do and they're very happy that somebody else is taking the brunt of their child's unhappiness and forcing their kid to go to school. You know, some of these kids turn around relatively quickly. Six months to a year, some of them are going to school and going to school regularly. We, you know, if you have a kid that goes to school regularly and they miss however many days out of the, out of the semester. We would have a different standard of what regularly going to school means. Some of these kids, if they improve greatly, and we're talking about kids that are missing 30, 80 days of school. Sometimes in a semester. I mean, we're talking about children that miss significant amounts of school. And so you know, if they, if they miss a couple of days for skipping and they haven't improved so drastically, then we celebrate that as well.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Judge, question I have is, what's the age where I can say, you know, I've had it with all of you, I'm dropping out?
18.
Oh, it is 18? Okay, thank you.
I would like to say that we're pretty impressed with the Menominee School District. The Menominee School District bends over backwards to try to have other programs where these kids will graduate. And so they're doing half-days. They have like three or four programs that they try to get these kids in. Storm Harmon comes from the school, from Menominee High School. He comes and attends all of our truancy hearings because they involve a lot of them and I, our biggest city is the city of Menominee, our biggest school district in our county. Most of them are city Menominee kids. And we're, I can't say how strongly impressive the Menominee School District is.
I don't see any other questions.
That's good.
I just have one last slide here, just some 2023 projects and goals for myself for the clerk of courts office. So what we're going to try to do this year is reduce the amount of jurors called in for jury duty service. How many of you have gotten a summons in the mail from my office that you're supposed to report in for jury duty service? Yes, people don't like that. They get scared. We make you serve for the entire month of the, that month. That doesn't mean that every trial or every day is going to go. And we would not have one person serve on every single one of those dates of the trials. We're having 14, 15 jury trials take place a year in Dunn County. So maybe one a month or we go a couple of months and then we have three in a month. So what I'm trying to do is reduce our numbers by about 750 jurors per year. Saves on cost of mailings. It makes the citizens happy that they don't get that awful letter from me. So that's one goal that we're going to try to do. We don't want to reduce the amount of jurors to scare the judges for our jury trial that they don't have enough jurors to pick to have a jury trial. That's now what I'm trying to do. I'm just trying to reduce the cost and the burden for the citizens that they get that letter from my office. I'm also working really hard on trying to get our exhibit management up to where it should be. The Wisconsin Supreme Court rules state that we need to offer exhibits back to people who offer an exhibit in a trial. And I'm doing that for non-scannable exhibits. So something that I can't electronically convert into our computer system. If it's something big and bulky, we need to offer it back. I have a room of storage of things that need to be cleaned out from the 90s. So I have a part-time employee working on that and that's my goal to get that completed by the end of 2023, mid 2024 at the latest. And also to reduce the cost for interpreters. Earlier I talked about how expensive 2022 was for interpreters in Dunn County. We're trying to block schedule all of our interpreters for individuals that need them on the same date and same time with the same judge. And we're also trying to use more certified interpreters. The state does reimburse the counties for interpreter usage, but it's based upon the certification level of the interpreter. So I've been reaching out to interpreters out of different states. Zoom has given me the ability to reach out and say, hey, I'm hiring somebody from the state of Washington that's going to get more reimbursement for the Dunn County taxpayers for an Arabic interpreter, because I don't have anybody locally in Menominee or in the state of Wisconsin to do so. So that's another goal. And then just continue to turn over our debts to the state debt collection program. They've been great to work with. There is no cost to Dunn County or the taxpayers by partnering with the Department of Revenue. So when people get their debts paid, we are happy about that. I'm going to turn it over to Judge Peterson if he has anything else to say. Otherwise, I want to thank you for, for, or questions?
Supervisor Lino and then Supervisor Bjork.
I just have one quick question. I noticed on the interpreter list that there was something called Karen?
Yes, it's a language. They call, yeah, car and I believe it's how they pronounce it. I've never sat in court with an interpreter speaking that language. Maybe the judges can.
Yeah, if I can, if I can think of the country, but it's, it's an Asian language.
Supervisor Gary Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we had the Third Circuit Court, the judges were really overworked. Now with the third one, are we more back on an even keel or are we still behind?
No, I would say we're on much more even level. I, maybe the Judge Peterson can attest to that. I know he survived the two-judge airship and now having three, I think it's a lighter burden. Case loads are much more evenly between the three branches. They have more time for jury trials and long motion hearings. So yes, it is much better in Dunn County. So thank you for the support of all those years that we came to the meetings asking for a third judge.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
My question was also the same about going to three judges and how does it affect the workload in Dunn County? But in that regard, how are, how are our three judges now going to be staggered as far as election process? I mean, we're not going to be electing two judges at one time.
Yes, we will be. Yes. Yep.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions for me? Otherwise I can turn it over to Judge Peterson.
I'm not seeing any.
No.
Okay, thank you very much, Katie. What's it? Myanmar. Yeah, that's right. We had a, there was a case where there were three young men that were stealing allegedly catalytic converters and they just spoke Karen and they're like Myanmar, they're like Burma, that area of, so I, that answers your question. We get people from all over the world. It's really interesting to see the number of different languages. So I just want to say a couple of things and, and one of those is, I think Miss Shally does an excellent job as her clerk of court and we're very lucky to have her. I want to say that first. The second thing I want to say is thank you all as representatives of the people of Dunn County for supporting all the departments that we work with and providing the resources that we need to do our jobs. You know, we have a good quality sheriff's department, Child Support Agency does a great job, Clerk of Courts Office does a great job, DA's office does a great job. And those are really good things and I think a very positive reflection on the county. And so I appreciate that. And I know you all appreciate that because one thing we really have in common is we all want to serve the public and we want to serve, serve our community. And, and I also want to say Judge Wagner was here, but, and, and as just as an aside, it's always a pleasure to see local government at work. I mean, it is, you have almost as much fun as we have in the courts. But Judge Wagner was here, but he did have an obligation that he had to, had to leave for somebody, but he was here. And so anyway, that's all I have to say. If you have any questions, except for any specific case, I'd be happy to try to answer any questions. All right, it's getting late. It's nine o'clock. Go ahead. Always happy. Nope. Okay. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Libraries.
Good evening. Thank you for all of the service that you're providing. This has been really educational for me to watch the last two hours and thank you for your service. I, my name is Jolene Stirk. I'm the Director of the Menominee Public Library. And I'd ask my colleagues that are here tonight to introduce themselves before we get into it.
And I'm Lisa Bragg-Hurlebert from Colfax Public Library.
And I am Callie Anderson from the Boyceville Public Library.
So I apologize for not having a fancy pantsy thing on the screen. I thought we were doing this next month, but here we are. We do have one fancy pantsy. I thought that was a really interesting graphic that Chris had shared and I just needed something to wrap my head around visually and say, okay, well, these are all of the things that your dollars go to on a $150,000 house. And then I tried creating a pie chart and that still didn't really work for me. So then if you can slide it down to see the bar graph, these are the areas that were represented on the graphic. And you might notice that libraries are close to the bottom in terms of space allocated. We aren't a county department exactly. We're not a revenue generating department. We don't bang on any doors and try to secure funds for Dunn County. We are municipally organized, municipally, is that a word? Okay. And governed by our own individual library boards. There is a Dunn County subset of all of you that are gathered here that governs and oversees what the plan is for libraries in Dunn County. And we do our very best to execute that. Under state statute, Chapter 43, you are all presented with a bill at the end of the year to say these were services that were provided to county residents by our respective libraries. You only have to reimburse our costs at 70%. So our job tonight is to convince you that it is worth making that investment to reimburse at 100%. Did you want to hop in or do you want me to go first or do you?
Well, you can go first.
So I've been thinking a lot about partnerships. And one of the ways that libraries, that our library represents Dunn County is by handing out this fancy pantsy guide that Health Done Right put together, filled with community resources, not only in Menominee, but throughout the entire county. And this is, I think, the second iteration of it. So we hand this out all the time. We currently are featuring a display on emergency notification system in Dunn County. So we have some display cases to draw attention to folks that visit us. Dunn County 4H. We do programming in cooperation with UW Extension with 4H. We like to promote those sorts of things. We have a jobs bulletin board in our library. We promote educated and informed voting when it's time to do that. The Center for Independent Living for Western Wisconsin has a display about all of the great services they're providing. We promote the 2-1-1 service regionally. We're promoting Menominee Head Start. We have tax forms. We have visitors guides. And we do have books and videos and audio content. We can tell you how to get this digitally on your phone or we have physical objects for those of you that are old enough to appreciate a physical book. I fall into that camp myself. The last thing that we are all promoting now through our consortia, it's a 10-county area in Western Wisconsin through the Moore system, is a passport program. And this is to help draw awareness so that people in Boyceville know that they can borrow books from River Falls, Eau Claire, Chippewa Falls. It's a huge area and people still are not completely aware that this is a thing. We're always sharing resources and that's a big part of what libraries do, you know, I think pretty well. And we've been doing it here in Dunn County for about 150 years. So mark your calendars. Next year, there's going to be a big stinking party because this is pretty unique. It's, it's really exciting. Something else that we can offer to all of you would be spaces to have constituent listening sessions. We have local newspapers and we offer programming so that people can gather around community conversations like how do we find affordable housing and solve those problems in Dunn County? And what else do I have to say that we want to? That's a lot. I mean, it's really, it takes a minute to get all this orchestrated and put together. So I guess that's all I would have to say is that I think it's worth the investment and would encourage you all to please continue to fund Dunn County libraries at 100%.
Yeah, and just jumping off of that, I, I would comment on the passport program that we're doing that. That's bringing different people through our, our different communities. So it's, it's actually, you know, kind of nice for the communities commerce probably. People stop in the library and then they, you know, go down the street and visit some of the other businesses. But libraries are definitely well-used, well-loved today. In fact, over the past year, we've had some growth in some areas. Our book club went from five members to 19 members. So we're pretty happy with that. We added some storytime hours to accommodate families who can make it in the evening, not the morning. And we've added a second storytime also. And so our program participation has actually doubled in the past year as a result of some of that outreach. So I know you've all been here a long time. I don't want to go on and on. So I'll take questions at the end if you want to ask anything.
Okay. Hello, like I said, my name is Callie Anderson and I am the new director at the Boyceville Public Library. Previously, I was the director at the Elmwood Public Library in Pierce County. And I've been at my new station in Boyceville for a little over a month now. And since I am so new and this is my first meeting, I'm going to keep this really short and sweet. But I basically just wanted to talk a little bit about what's been going on in Boyceville lately. And for the last month or so, we have been crazy busy gearing up for summer reading. This year, our theme is adventure awaits and we have tons of fun programming planned. We have two performers coming. We also have a safety day in the works that, and we will be partnering with Boyceville EMS Police and the Fire Department. And we will also have a couple of volunteers from the Red Cross. And then our other programming that we do is still going very strong. We average about 25 kids every week for story hour. And our book club averages about 15 people. Next week, we will be hosting our annual reading is Fundamental Day for the first time in three years. So each elementary school class will come visit the library and the children will have the chance to check out books, tour the library, play games, stuff like that. And we have also started to take small but meaningful steps on our new building project. As I'm sure some of you know, this has been in the works for over two decades now. And finally seeing it kind of come together has been super exciting. We have chosen an architectural firm who has provided us with some concept plans for the lot that we hope to build on. And next month, we will have our first building committee meeting. And that's about all I have. If there's any questions.
Supervisor Zons.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess this is directed to all three of the librarians here. I'm also serving on the county broadband task force and I'm wondering a couple of things. First of all, how, how many people just anecdotally are still coming to the library to, because they don't have broadband access at home or using it for their, their internet access? Or using it for their their internet access? And we just recently published a broadband survey and we were hoping that the libraries were were distributing that. Were you finding that people were doing that survey at the libraries?
Yeah, I was going to mention that it, our Wi-Fi usage has people coming in to use our Wi-Fi that's gone down a little bit. And I'm not sure why that is. I know more people, you know, come in with their own devices. We've had a little bit less use of the public computers. But
I think I'm glad you asked that question because I was going to mention that too. We see a lot of people using our Wi-Fi with their own devices. And as Lisa said, we've tracked this with our use of our public computers decreasing, but certainly there's a need for reliable internet and we're lucky to have fiber optic in the library. So that's been really beneficial. We also circulate Wi-Fi hotspots to people and I would I crunched the numbers recently and I think it was between fifty, sixty. Mike, maybe you can help me with this. Unique users in the past calendar year. So people that are running their small businesses out of their home, but have kids that need to use their bandwidth for homework or people that, you know, need to take it on the road for one reason or another. It's been really popular and really helpful and I'm thankful to the Public Library Foundation for underwriting the cost of that service. Certainly, we promote whenever there are surveys or communications about public meetings and definitely feature community resources on our website. So I'll make sure that that gets on to the, how long is that survey open?
You know, I wish I can't remember when we were closing it, but we're something up until I think into June, I think is when when we're going to close it, but we're trying to have it mostly open this month.
Okay, and I took the survey.
Oh, good.
Supervisor, Supervisor Headland.
Yeah, I just for Callie. Whenever I've been at the library anyway, Callie, the the computers are normally in use. Is that still the case?
Oh, definitely. I would say. Again, it's hard for me to say. I've only been there for a month, so I can't speak to how much they were used in the past, but they are used multiple times every single day. Same with our Wi-Fi hotspots. We've only had ours for like three weeks now, I would say, but they are constantly being checked out. So definitely our internet is getting used.
Supervisor Hagan.
Feature that I didn't hear mentioned was exhibitor spaces. I have an artist colleague who was able to showcase some of their artwork in the Menominee Library here in town. And so it was kind of fun walking in and seeing all those pieces up there. So I'm really glad that the libraries are an open space for things like that. So thank you.
Supervisor Steen.
I just want to thank all the ladies for their hard work. I think libraries are the backbone of our communities. And appreciate the work that you do with the old folks and the little ones.
It's good work.
And it's there for everybody. But your job is harder.
And this has been a very impressive meeting to watch. I mean, the public gets listened to, really listened to and you ask such thoughtful questions. I mean, I wish everybody could see it. And I wish, you know, maybe our federal government was a little bit more like this in behavior. But very impressive.
Thank you. I am not seeing any more questions, but I will note, having served two years on the Menominee Library Board, my city council hat, that I see the committees doing good government. I see them doing careful stewardship of the funds that we give them, just generally doing all around good work. And I believe you are off the hook. Okay. On to item ten, consideration of reports, resolutions and ordinances to the County Board from the Executive Committee. Item A, resolution adopting the fiscal year twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-eight capital improvements plan. We took this back to exec and complied with what looked like wishes the board and this is the current recommendation. Using a, yeah, I'm sorry. Can we get a motion on the floor? Supervisor Kinnear moves Supervisor Rogers seconds. Thank you. So no borrowing. Cleared out the ARPA, rest of it's out of fund balance.
And I would just note you have a copy of the complete capital improvement plan in your packets. None of that changed from the last round. The only thing that changed was looking at the funding.
So the floor is open for Supervisor Hagan.
Thank you. Could I just get a quick review as to how the decision was made? For this option?
The initial option that was brought forward was voted down by the County Board as a whole, which sent it back to committee. The discussion during the board meeting made it pretty clear that the board did not wish to borrow any money while we had the ARPA funds available. So we felt that the simplest way to clear that particular lineup was to clear out the ARPA funds, do the rest from fund balance. Okay, thank you. Supervisor Sean Breslin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So it's my understanding that based off of what's on the screen there is we're not having a short-term debt or long-term debt for twenty-four. But when I go down into the Dunn County twenty-four, twenty-eight capital project request by department a year, we still have recommended funding sources of short-term, long-term.
That will be a decision for the board that is elected at that point in time.
For twenty-four?
For the twenty-five.
Now I'm talking about the twenty-four.
You are correct. They might not have gotten changed from the first round.
Okay, so when we vote on this, are we voting for option one or what's on here on the sheet?
I think that you could. So the only thing that would change would be the short-term and long-term debt would become a combination of ARPA and fund balance and we can make those amended changes after the fact.
Okay.
Any further speaking? Supervisor Larry Bjork.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Gee, I don't want to make a habit out of this, but thanks to Executive Committee for working hard and listening to people and making some changes. And real pleased to see the work that you've done.
Thank you, Supervisor Bjork. Being now they're speaking, I guess we can go ahead and get this to a vote. Anyone have a need to make this one a roll call? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Supervisor Lino, did you? All right. All right. That's clear. Ten B, election of Chair pro tem for the June County Board Meeting. I will be in Sweden. Supervisor Steen will also be out of town, so we will need someone else to run the June meeting. The executive, we checked out, checked on the rolls, see how that works. The Executive Committee had a discussion about it. I suggested, but it is, it is the choice of this board who they will elect to that particular seat. I suggested Supervisor Tom Quinn as the senior most member of the board and the longest-serving chair of any committee. But whatever your wishes are, the floor is open to nominations. Supervisor Headland.
I would make motion to ask Mr. Quinn to serve as our chair at that meeting, which is coming up next month.
Yes, indeed. Supervisor Steen, Supervisor Headland moves Supervisor Steen seconds. Are there any other nominations? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? Well, Tom, you're on the hook for next month.
You mean they could say a word?
Absolutely.
It was quite a shock to me when I learned I was the longest-serving member of the board. Bit of a surprise, but also an embarrassment for somebody who really usually supports term limits. So but I think we all agree that sometimes as members of this board, we have to make special sacrifices. I will try and do my job. Sometimes as, as board members, we just need to step up and look duty in the eye and say, how do you duty?
Thanks, Tom. And I will note that I've already established the precedent that you probably don't need to tie. Okay, so that is also clear. Ten C, ordinance admitting chapter two of the Code of Ordinances Rules of the Board, second reading. Is this the electronic meeting one or is this the other one, the confidentiality?
This is the electronic meeting.
Electronic meetings, okay. You've all had a chance. This is second reading, so you've all had a chance to look this over. We had the brief discussion of what it's about. Do we have any discussion? Oh, yes, we.
Supervisor Kinnear very diligently caught a typo in section two. So there is a handout on your desk. It's a little half sheet of paper. It's just adding the word and in section two subsection two. So just for clarification on how the policy would go forward.
Just who has to know, who needs to know if you're going to be at the meeting electronically? All right, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Motion passes. Ten D, ordinance admitting section two point one eight of the Code of Ordinances Rules of the Board, second reading. This would be the one about board confidentiality. Any discussion of the ordinance? Supervisor Kinnear.
I just had a question. Suppose that I'm on a committee that that had a closed session and I was absent. Can I go back and say what happened? Did I explain that right?
I believe that you were asking if you went to someone who was at the meeting that you would normally be at and ask whether
Yes.
You could. And in addition, the minutes from closed portions at some point in time become public. When the need for the closed session, obviously I would discourage great detail. But when the need for maintaining confidentiality no longer exists, for example, if you're negotiating a contract, you don't want to tell the other side what your bottom line is. So but once the contract is entered into the meeting, the closed session minutes would become public. And so I mean, at some point in time, you'd know anyway, but if you're a member of the committee, you would be entitled to know what happened at the committee from the committee chair.
Any further speaking? All right, seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Ten E, resolution twenty twenty-three budget adjustments for CJC's IT, DHS and highway. And you've all seen quite a few of these at this point. Supervisor Steen moves. Supervisor Hartung seconds. Motion is on the floor. We can go into greater detail on this if you would like, but it's the money comes in, money goes out. We need to make sure that we get it all taken care of.
This is a two-thirds roll.
Two-thirds roll call, yeah. So any, anyone wish to speak to the motion? All right, then we can go to vote. Voting is now open on your microphone. Please tap your screen if it has gone to sleep. While they are voting, Supervisor. Yes, Supervisor Robinson.
Yes.
Supervisor Gilbert.
Yes. Yes.
All right. With twenty-six yeses, that motion passes. All right. Eleven A. Consideration of reports, resolutions and ordinances coming to the County Board from the Standing Committees. A is Legislative Committee Resolution Supporting Funding for the Heritage Hall renovation. Can I get a motion? Supervisor Steen and Supervisor Zons. Speaking to the motion. Gary, do you want to, since this came out of legislative?
Following up on the letter that we got from Chancellor Frank, the Legislative Committee had a discussion and we would like to offer our support for the financial completion of the Heritage Hall renovation.
Supervisor Larry Bjork.
This seems odd to me. Does the school district come to us when they want to redo a school or upgraded football field? What? Why are we so closely connected with Stout and the state of Wisconsin in supporting them? And I heard the word financial and that scares me because we're not going to financially support.
No, this is.
Are we just saying it's a good idea?
Pretty much. The board has done this a couple of times in the past. I think twenty, maybe twenty twelve, twenty thirteen was the last time with a, with one particularly for Stout.
One last thing. I was on the board when it came to the board that there was increase in wages for Stout. And that they were asking for our support. And that we say, yeah, you guys should increase your, that Stout should have higher wages. And I thought it was just a discussion point. I didn't think it was a great idea for us to to recommend whether they get a raise or don't get a raise. But boy, I sure run into a neighbor that worked in the library that told me what he thought of me not supporting him getting a raise. And he says, well, you know, maybe down at sanitaries or beach or whatever it's called, you know, they don't come to the county board and say we'd like you to support a raise. So that's, that's my background thinking on it on. You know, it's, I think it's a good idea, but I find it odd.
Supervisor Steen and then Supervisor Rogers.
In answer to Supervisors, Larry Bjork's question, really Larry, it's, it's just a statement of support. We feel it's doesn't tie us in anything other than the fact that we are supporting the fact that we are supporting remodeling Heritage Hall. I don't I think it is a good idea, but I don't think it's setting any precedent or anything.
Supervisor Rogers.
I guess I'm not opposed to the project, but I guess the to say the precedence set, we're not setting a new precedence, but we're we're creating precedence by being involved in it. I don't completely feel comfortable influencing legislators to appropriate funds for building projects. There are many factors that go into determining which projects take precedence over the others. And we really don't have the information to see which ones should be appropriate. That's why I would not completely on board with the resolution. Thank you.
Supervisor Thomas.
Thank you, Chair. Perhaps the reason that something like this comes to us is because UW Stout is a public institution, maybe, and being in our county and that kind of thing maybe is why some of these things come to us. I'm just supposing, I guess, but that's what makes most sense to me.
Any further speaking? All right, all in favor? Any opposed? Any extensions? So two extensions. Wife works for the university. I don't think it's appropriate to read about on this one. Okay, that takes us to 11B, planning resources development committee ordinance rezone in the town of Sherman. You need a motion? Supervisor Quinn. Supervisor Gary Bjork is a second. Supervisor Quinn.
I think the this is pretty straightforward rezone from general act to residential at the town of Sherman. The this clears up a sort of a several knotty land use questions that have been kind of hanging over the properties in the area. And it's supported by the by the town and the committee supports it and also importantly by the neighbors surrounding the property. So we recommend passage.
Thank you, Supervisor Quinn. Any further speaking to the motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. That takes us to 11C, which has been dealt with. We are now on to 12, which is announcements. Our next county board meeting will be Wednesday, June 21st at 7:00 PM and Supervisor Quinn will be running the meeting. And then also mark your calendars for the budget workshop meeting, which will be at 5:30 PM. So an earlier meeting on August 30th. Supervisors Ons.
I have an announcement for those. Those of us who attend different meetings and that sometimes outside of the the county board or even county board meetings, I found it very helpful to have a name tag. And so I found a good resource for having these done. So I will confer with our county board chair to determine a way to maybe do this so everybody can get one of these. But if you're interested and want to take a look at it, it was pretty inexpensive to do and I got ones with magnets so it doesn't poke a hole in your shirt, which is kind of nice. So
I think that the the county board budget would probably stretch to 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 afford those and I
But if you want to take a look, I've got got an extra one here. Plus, I'm wearing one on my shirt.
That does really look quite nice. Andrew.
If you have per DM sheets, please feel free to turn them in. Also, I need to see Supervisors Prochnow, Steen, and Quinn for signatures. Also, there was a little flyer on your desk tonight. We will be doing the county board tour on Wednesday, June 20, oh, June 7th, 2023, too sleepy. On the backside, there is the breakdown of the times that we're going to start at 1 o'clock and then throughout the afternoon roughly. If you're not able to join us at 1, you can join us at any of the other times that you're able to join us at those locations. We'll then be doing a departmental department head and supervisor social at Cancun at 5 o'clock afterwards. So there's no RSVP, just show up on Wednesday, June 7th at 1 o'clock right on the second floor outside the county administration office.
Thank you for arranging that, Andrew. I know it was a good bit of work. Anything else? All right.
Dairy breakfast is coming in June. But I don't
So apparently find out when that is and where Dunn County Dairy Breakfast. All right, folks. We are adjourned.